Joseph Panzik, he's absent. Paul Costalich.
Here.
Julie Chandler.
Here.
Kathy Cooper.
Here.
Liz Gump.
Here.
Pete Menaitis.
Here.
If anyone is filming, Anne Marie Miller, and I already spoke, she's filming, that will be noted in the minutes. We have one person for Citizen Speak, Mr. Smiddle.
Hey Siri, can you tell me when three minutes are up?
Three minutes, starting now.
I've spoken at about ten or the last twelve school board meetings on various health and safety and transparency-related topics, such as not complying with the school board mission of maintaining educationally efficient facilities, not doing radon testing, managing, not managing grants and donations by the most qualified staff, not being more transparent by videotaping and publishing more meaningful minutes to school board meetings, and by not making misleading statements. This leads me to an article in the In Community magazine, which is out front, where Mr. Daniels is quoted as saying, "Kenna McMillan School District refuses to be mediocre." But, you know, when you do something, you don't do something because it's not mandatory, that's being mediocre. And the district, and also quoted as, "The district has been transparent with its branding process from the inception, and there have been variety of different staff members present at the meetings, from teachers to board members and administrators to support staff members." You use the word "teachers," which is plural. I've looked at all the branding meetings, and there was only one teacher at three of the four meetings. So I don't know why you're using the plural. And I want to say, when I use the plural "you," I don't mean all of you. I just mean certain select people, and they know who they are. So this leads me to why I started speaking at these school board meetings. I started speaking at these meetings because in the past few years, there have been some very serious health and safety crises facing our community. Also, I have some history of reaching out to the Kenna McMillan School District. Actually, I have a ten-year anniversary of trying to help the school district. It's been ten years to this month that I got a $10,000 grant, $10,000 grant for the school district. And during those past ten years, I learned that the support department misused the intent of these grant monies. The support department director was founded of ethics violations. No disciplinary actions were taken by the school district, and the school district has not accepted any of my expert offers to help the school district with more grant writing or health and safety designs and consultations. Finally, I can no longer be limited to three minutes on what I have to say about who, what, where, when, why, and how. Some things are being done or not done in the Kenna McMillan School District, or in any school district. Therefore, if I see something that is not right, just fair, equitable, or ethical, I feel obligated to speak out any way I can. Also, therefore, I'm writing articles in social media and some local newspapers to reach out and help our community. Thank you, Siri.
Before we adopt the agenda this evening, we are going to enter item 6.7. It's Act 57 of 2022, and we'll be adding it to the October agenda. So with that, is there a motion on the table to adopt the agenda as presented?
Motion.
Julie made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Kathy Cooper made the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. In executive session this evening, we spoke of personnel matters and label matters.
Yeah, so that brings us to the recognition section, and we have a couple items. I'll read for you. The Kenna McMillan High School's senior, Kelsey Wonderra, has received the N double A R A, which is the National African American Recognition Award, from the college board. The college board has informed the Kenna McMillan School District that they couldn't be more delighted to share the great news that senior Kelsey Wonderra was recognized because of her academic achievements and for her outstanding performance on the PSAT and the NM, NM SQT. The college board also indicated that Kelsey accomplished this milestone during an immensely demanding period of her high school career. Congratulations, good to Kelsey. Next item, one of the Kenna McMillan band directors, Mrs. Grantstaff, has been included in the forty under forty list for the greater Pittsburgh area from Pittsburgh Magazine. According to their website, each year Pittsburgh Magazine and Pulp recognize forty outstanding individuals under the age of forty whose creativity, vision, and passion enriched the Pittsburgh region. She will be recognized along with other individuals listed on their website at a ceremony in November. Congratulations, good to Mrs. Grantstaff. Those are outstanding.
And we have two, we have two students here for recording, thank you. I'm Ally Poplarcheck, and Emily Scottless.
Scottless.
Take it away.
Hi, I'm Ally Poplarcheck, and I am the student council president at the high school.
I am Emily Scottless, and I'm the vice president.
Our first event for student council this year was the homecoming parade that began at six o'clock on Saturday, and that started at St. Pat's or St. Oscar Romero Church. And we went down Pike Street onto Iron Street at the stadium. There were many clubs that walked in the parade, and a few of them being Environmental Club, Academic Competition, and Drama Club.
We also had the Esports Club, Kenna McMillan Scholarship Foundation, junior class officers, student council members, and other groups in the parade working with the Big Mac Band, CMHS cheerleaders, Homecoming Corps, and Flytrucks.
Student council members also volunteered the morning of homecoming to set up for the dance, which started at 8:00 a.m.
We also had an open house this past Tuesday, it started at six o'clock at the high school, and had student council volunteers spread out of the high school for directions assisting with the event.
A few of our upcoming events include the Blood Lab on November 7th from 8:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. And all students sixteen and up are able to donate, and student council members will be the volunteers for that event. And we also have the Santa Fund that will be coming in December. Any questions?
That it?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Great report. You're welcome to stay with us for the rest of our meeting, or you're welcome to choose to go. I'm sure you have a couple things, like homework and what have you, but yeah, like I said, you're welcome to stay as well.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for coming. And it was nice meeting you last week, too.
Yes, me too.
All right, so we'll start with administrative reports, and I'll change to my administrator hat and kick us off with my report for this evening. I'm passing around the district snapshot. Hope you have a second to get it, and then we'll go over that briefly. This snapshot is something that I do annually, and it'll be posted on the district website tomorrow. Hopefully, it shares some key information that you find useful. So the summary starts out with where we believe our revenues and expenses were for last year and this year. Our audit isn't complete, these are projections. It shows by expense category where we spend our money, how we get our money, local, state, and federal, and that breakdown, the top five budgeted expenses. I'm not going to read the second page, but the second page on the left-hand side, we have some categories that I like to update each year to bring everyone up to speed. The right-hand section talks a little bit about why we have a surplus this year. The third page is our tax mileage history. I give some historic information of where we have gone and where we are with tax no increases or not no increases. The fourth page is Washington County schools and where we fall in terms of taxation. I added grants, grants, and more grants page. As we've recorded multiple meetings multiple times, we have a number of grants that are still outstanding, a few that have completed. So on this first page, I list those and the sums. You'll see at the bottom, we have some new safety grants that PCCD gave to us after the budget was passed. It was part of Act 14 of 2008, but after the budget passed, they made those allocations. So we're working on that. And then on the next page has the breakdown of where we're, for the four main ESSR grants, where we're spending our money. The team will be getting back together to make some changes and alignments based on spending, because we use estimates, and we'll be screwing that up here coming up in a meeting. So I'll continue to report on that and share that with all of you. The next page is the long-range planning. It's also out there on our district website, but I always include it in the snapshot because long-range planning is closely tied to district finances. So you'll see, I have a lot of completed on here, which is awesome. But we're down to phase six through eight. And I highlighted some things in yellow. In the Budget Finance Committee, there's an extra line added that you didn't see in our meeting that I added. To where we are, the yellow is where we are right now. We're getting ready to start construction at the new Wildenville stage. To kick that off, we have a design phase, and then we'll have to have an Act 34 hearing to be able to secure funding for that project. And I also added that it's important to note, for those of you that have fallen along with us through this long-range plan, that this will be the first project since we started this plan that you see on this page of all of these projects, that we will not be receiving any planned funding for. And I cannot stress the importance of what that means. Over the course of a bond issue, we get millions of dollars. So when we go to do the funding for this project, we have to do the funding based on no reimbursement. So that'll be new to us, we've never been in that situation before. So that's our long-range plan page. And then the next two pages are just some added information. Years ago, Mr. Bahkus, who's not here tonight, asked me in a budget meeting if I could create a document that he could take with him if people ask him questions, because he didn't remember all this stuff all the time, there's lots of the finances. And that morphed into certain questions I'm asked all the time, I answered here, so that we had, you know, we had the same answer, because they'd call me, and then I'd say the same thing over. So I put those on here. I also put some challenges on here, because those keep increasing. While we'd like to be able to spend money on, you know, fun things, sometimes we're not able to, because we have a lot of unfunded mandates. So this is our snapshot. Tomorrow, we'll on the website, are there any questions on the snapshot? And the board members that aren't here, that are on the phone, I'll put a copy in your mailboxes for you. The next item that I have is, we can't say this enough, October 1st, free breakfast. And we'll be splashing that out on multiple social media sites, but spread the word. The governor made an announcement about a week and a half ago that breakfast starting October 1st would be free. So, you know anyone, ask them to get breakfast, try out our breakfast, it's a great time to try it.
Yeah, Jody, they're also trying to get legislation passed for free lunches, too.
That's out there. The whole school year, we've been reading reports that, but it has to come from USDA, which is a federal arm. Our state was waiting for that nod, so that's sort of the delay. I can tell you, we are hopping in the part of the business office, we're hopping in the business office right now because it's audit time, but lots of free and reduced applications, lots of parents with questions. So we're getting back to normal, but that's why I can't share this enough. And as soon as, if that announcement's made about lunch, I haven't gotten that word yet, I will, we'll be sure to splash that out as quickly as possible, too. The other item that I want to share with all of you tonight, and I'm going to pass a packet around with the board members, if there's something, obviously, you're not going to be able to read this, I'm talking about it, but just so you can glance at it. So once you guys go down there, we can pass it back. Yeah, you guys are good. I attended yesterday, I'm the delegate for the school board for the Washington County Tax Collection Committee. A number of years ago, just to give some history, we had individual tax collectors of all of our municipalities across the state. There was an act, a legislative act, that made one collector per county. So each county had to conduct interviews of the services that were out there. And our county chose Keystone Collections, and boy, were we lucky. They have done an outstanding job. The meeting that I went to yesterday, the packet there has some information, but I'm going to summarize what's in the packet. Cypher and Cypher is also their auditors, did their audit. Susan Key is the solicitor. We meet once or twice a year. They have an executive committee that meets with Keystone, but they're in charge of getting our earned income and our LST taxes. So just to share what's in there, is Keystone shared the EIT went back up, was up to an 11% increase this year, which is back on track of where it was pre-pandemic. Just to give you an idea of what it has been prior to this, last year it was 1.1% increase. The COVID year was a negative 2%, now this is county-wide. The year before that, 0.9, and then pre-pandemic, 6.3. So it's rebounding again. For Kenna McMillan, we actually, this was a little bit higher than the state average, Washington County, but Kenna McMillan was even a little bit better than that. So that's why we saw some surpluses, and it's in my notes, is everyone expected EIT to take a lot worse than it did. It did, but for us, it wasn't as deep as some of the other districts and municipalities in the county, but it's on the rebound. So that's good news. LST was only a 3.9%. Last year was negative 3.6, the prior year negative 6.9, the year before that, 2.1%. And then pre-pandemic was 24.6% increases. So we're seeing a rebound there, but LST is a local service tax, and that's a lot of hospitality and restaurants, and those still have heartbreak rebounding as far back as the other. The other thing that the committee did to share with you is they had elections for their executive board. They did a resolution for a small rate increase. And the third thing they are going to be sharing with school boards and municipalities is they have trouble getting a form for their meetings. It's why I'm, we select as a delegate, because I'm so close, and I usually can get to go, is we have more voting because we're a bigger district. But typically, they're not even able to hold the meeting, because they don't get enough people to come to it. We did have a quorum yesterday, but they're going to be sharing with school boards and municipalities a proxy resolution in the event, they just want to give them the authority so that they can conduct their business. So that was the tax collection report. Frontline Analytics is the analytical tool that the district uses for benchmarking data for all of our district finances. I shared last year that I made it a goal to use more analytics in conveying information to the board. I did that at every budget finance meeting. And then I took it a step further and used their tool to do some budget planning and using that module forecasting. I'm going to continue this year to see how I do on forecasting, and then continue to forecast. The company has asked me to be their business manager of the year. I will be presenting once a month on a call for all business managers in Pennsylvania, sharing my story, Kenna McMillan's story, sharing our analytics that I've created, that I share with all of you, to teach other business managers how to use the tool and the analytics. And then we have an office hours after the call to learn how to do some of the things we're doing. So that was pretty exciting, considering I'm still learning, so pressure's not on or anything. Audit updates, I reached out to the auditor general's office to get an update of our special audit. They've now moved the deadline to November. Mid to late November, we should hear back instead of August. Our internal audit, the internal auditors have left the building, but they're still auditing us. We have some straggling data that we need to get to them. Until we are 100% completed with that, which we're not yet, they won't start to run the financials. But as soon as that process is complete, I'll begin the annual financial reporting, and you'll be hearing from the auditors, and from me, there'll be a lot of information shared about where we are. The state also came out on the 17th with the base Act One index. The base is 4.1%, so that is the taxing ability that the school board has in terms of taxation. September 30th is when we get the adjusted base index. I don't anticipate any adjustment to our base, we haven't had an adjusted base in the last three or four years, so I don't expect that to change. Any questions? I know that was a lot of stuff. I have those in my voice. All right.
I just want to add, I think it's incredible that, you know, you've done such a great job with frontline analytics that they've asked you to be their face for the state of Pennsylvania. In addition, when some board members go to the annual Pennsylvania School Boards Association conference, I think you have a class there, too, that you're, you'll be presenting.
I'm not, I'm not presenting at the class, but the, our representative, our customer service person, and another business manager are presenting there. That was already, you have to do that a year in advance to do that. So that concludes my report, thank you. Jordan, you're up.
All right. I'll start with a brief transportation update for the year. Our transportation department is faring dramatically better than last year. To this point in the school year, which it is early, we have plenty of sports going on. We've had to cancel one practice shuttle, and today we had to reschedule one middle school volleyball game. So today, for that tenant to occur, which we knew this yesterday, so we had a 24-hour notice to reschedule the game. The other school was accommodating, the game will stay on the schedule. We had seven drivers off in the afternoon. And with seven drivers off, we still got each student home, and we accommodated six after-school shuttles. So we're making it happen, and like I said, it's a major improvement from last year. So hopefully that continues, and, you know, it has its ups and downs, but it looks a lot better this year. Wildenville, kind of two-part here. We did get a trailer delivery, classroom delivery, last Thursday. Got it on-site, kind of made a couple things happen on a short timeframe, got it in there. They were doing the setup process on Monday and found that trailer is not suitable to use, that there was a, that the prior tenant had made some alterations, and that this trailer is not structurally stable. So during this week, we've had that one removed, they removed half of it yesterday. We'll be having it tomorrow, and we're getting our new trailer tomorrow. So does push us back another timeframe, at least a week. I did have to reschedule West Penn Power, they did not give me time to come back to set up power, but hopefully that's next week as well. But again, a project that has some hurdles and some speed bumps, we do have progress. We had it on-site, everything was going well, but again, we had to call an audible, and hopefully we have that set up tomorrow, and next week, we can get it powered and inspect.
How does that happen? Is that like quality control from the company that we bought the trailer from, that it shows up?
Yeah, so they...
Do we get a discount now? We have a delay, and...
It is, and we can reach out to the company about that, but they should inspect it before it's on-site, absolutely. But they're the experts, they bring it there, they do all the entire setup. But they also, it's a trailer that was used before, so they renovated in between uses. So, you know, kind of just like turn an apartment, you paint it, you can fix things that are broke. So definitely should have been caught before it's on-site, but, you know, when they got there, and they actually, Mr. Chambers knew first, he had just had it be on-site, and he called me, and I was like, "You've been just messing with me?" But unfortunately, they did have to take it back, so we'll see how quickly they can. Quick turnaround to get one other one back out here in a week. So hopefully this one's set, and this is the one we need to use.
Discount.
Yeah. Second part of Wildenville is you will see on tonight's agenda, item 6.12. That is the proposal for a survey from MDM. That's the very first step we need to make happen to start the design process. That will let us know where the case of the building is, and determine essentially the final layout of the building, determining on the terrain, so that is on the agenda tonight, and that will kind of get us kicked off and get us started on the Wildenville project. As that one starts, we're looking to finish another one, so the middle school project has a lot going on right now. It's a very busy time of the project. You know, the major finishes are happening, flooring, painting, casework, plumbing finishes. A lot of things are happening, but the exciting part is, we're starting the commissioning, we're starting punch list areas. So we have some important dates that, we have some milestone dates that we have set. So commissioning, we're going to commission the crack unit tomorrow, that's a computer room air conditioning unit. So we have to take that step to be able to start our network. So all our fiber and everything that runs the network throughout the district, this will enable us to start all that process. The kitchen equipment, the coolers, the waffle coolers, freezers, ovens, all of that will get commissioned on Monday. So we'll see, again, hopefully everything's in working order and everything was connected the right way. We commissioned the emergency generator on Tuesday. So there's all pretty big milestones. We also started to move and condition air in the gym, music, and office areas, in the cafeteria areas. So we are conditioning moving air, which is going to enable us to bring in the gym floor. It has to sit and condition to the room for 20 days before we can install it. But we are moving air, so we can bring the blood in, which we are doing next week to sit for 20 days before the install starts there. Punch list dates, so we are anticipating punch listing F2, which is the top floor of classrooms, October 10th. F1, which is the first floor of classrooms, October 21st, and the bottom classrooms, October 31st. Things that are coming before that, punch list the MDF, IDF, receiving area, and resting room, all next Wednesday, September 28th. And we're also going to punch list the entire roof on September 29th. So the punch list process means that area is complete. Our engineers and architects, along with the school district, walk through, and we document anything that we feel is not acceptable to the district. We make that list, the punch list, we turn it back over to the contractors, and they go through and finish that work in the area that we deemed not acceptable. So there's all pretty concrete dates, again, exciting time. That means, once that starts, the next thing is furniture. So we do have concrete dates for furniture, we're going to accept our first delivery to the middle school, direct to the middle school, September 29th and 30th, all of the classroom desks. Those are going to go bypass the support facility, straight to the middle school. We're going to store them in the resting room and storage areas on the ground floor, which again, will be punch listed September 28th, the following day, and we're going to move furniture into those areas. October 3rd and 10th are our dates to move the furniture from the support facility over to the middle school. Again, the classroom area should be punch listed at the time, so furniture will go directly to the classroom it's assigned to, start unpacking and assembling on-site. So all of that being said, right now, our original substantial completion date was October 22nd. We knew we were pushed back from that, so at this time, November 4th, seems to be substantial completion for every area except the gym, auditorium, and central office area. Those areas, we anticipate to be completed November 21st. So that's our timeline here. We do have a coax that we have to put out to bid for the communications. And you also see on tonight's agenda, furniture moving company that we do have scheduled, kind of will be our final step from the current middle school to the new middle school, so we do have a proposal on the agenda tonight for that as well. So again, I'm free.
So on September 7th, the policy committee met, and we reviewed a number of policies that stem from actions as a result of Act 55, I think it was. Act 55 were, that altered several sections of the school code. And as a result, we had to change a number of policies in regards to safety and security. The first policy in that area is the threat assessment policy, 236.1. The next one is the 805 Emergency Preparation and Response, and a new policy that we had to create, 805.1, that deals with school security personnel. The bulk of the changes underneath these policies dealt with training. And those trainings got detailed down to what people who needs trained, what they need to be trained on, how many hours in each of the areas, and then how frequent. So, you know, the, my interpretation is reaction to the unfortunate events that took place in Texas and the seemingly lack of preparation that was evident. And so the Pennsylvania legislation took these steps. Some of the areas that now training must occur in, situational awareness, trauma-informed approaches, behavioral health awareness, suicide and bullying awareness, substance use, emergency training drills, including natural disaster, active shooter, hostage situation, and bomb threat. We do a lot of those already. Now we'll have to track, you know, how many hours, how frequently, and maintain evidence for the potential audits for future to make sure you're in compliance. The school security personnel, we always had to have a safety and security coordinator. Now... Now, in addition to that, they put stipulations in that if that person were to leave, you have to fill a vacancy within a certain timeframe, and that individual is responsible for a number of different things, such as ensuring these trainings are occurring, is the liaison in, between law enforcement and the district, and if the district has its own security force, they have responsibilities in that regard. The other policies that were addressed were policies 103 and 104. And in regards to those policies, they were brought up to compliance with current regulations, which included training for administration and staff. And also, we had to update it to have different roles and responsibilities identified with the people who are in charge of handling claims of discrimination under Title IX. And with that, the policy now includes specific individuals, you know, that will have certain roles and who will handle certain aspects of the process. And so it's very detailed, it is mandated by the federal laws, and so it's very important you follow it to the detail, so it is a very lengthy policy if you had a chance to look at it. Next, and I'm going at it really out of order, so for those of you who are at the policy meeting or like, "He's not following anyone." So the next one that we dealt with was eligibility of non-resident students. And in a nutshell, what we did to that policy is revised it to clearly allow for a senior in good standing to remain a student of the district if they moved away during their senior year, and they would be able to do that tuition-free. So that was the change there. It had language that sort of gave it an indication it would be allowable, but this made it very clear and put the discretion at the super. Transportation policy was revised, policy 810, and what we did there is provide clarity in the area of extracurricular transportation, so that anyone who is involved in extracurricular activity will understand what things are covered by district and what's the process in getting transportation to those types of activities. Is that a good summary?
That is.
Policy 916, the use of district name, nicknames, color, and insignias. In June, the board approved a new mascot and logo. That now is a part of that policy as an attachment, replaces the old logo and mascot. So that policy was revised in that regard. Policy 004, membership. There was discussion about including a process to fill a vacant board seat when that occurs. And there, the policy now describes the process as it was when we approved the last vacancy, which, I'll pull it up so I can... So when a vacancy occurs, prospective candidates for appointment will be solicited and evaluated using the following process. Vacancy will be approved at the next publicly advertised voting meeting. A request for candidates to fill the vacancy will be advertised for five calendar days in a local newspaper, on the district website, and other social, district-managed social media sites. The advertisement must include all applicable qualifications and criteria and a deadline for the application. All candidates must submit a letter of interest and resume by the specified date. Qualified candidates will appear at the next publicly advertised meeting. Qualified candidates will be interviewed by the remaining members of the board. And we had a number five also on that, which included what is already stated underneath vacancies, is that the board would fill that with, take every effort to fill that within 30 days of the occurrence. And at the policy committee meeting, there was discussion about some previous recommendations about this policy, and we sought to have our legal counsel review it. And, Ms. Anderson, do you want to share what your thoughts are with that, or I can share them?
Yeah, so I said, my recommendation was to remove that number five, that we would make every effort to fill it because the initial paragraph already said, and actually uses the language that says, "That you shall fill." I also recommended some discretion in that procedure. You know, the current procedure that was sent to me said you would hold interviews. I said to Scott, "I don't recall you really doing interviews as in questions and answers, but more of a tell us about yourself." You know, and I was telling Michael that, you know, and you know I've recommended kind of keeping a little bit of flexibility in how you manage the process. There is no specific process in the school code, but just allowing yourself to have some flexibility and do you want to have formal interviews? You might, depending on how many people apply, or you may want people to come up and tell them about yourselves. I have a district right now that we just had a board member pass away. He was, he will be the fourth vacancy that this board had this year, so this will be filling their fourth vacancy. By the fourth vacancy, you know, they said, "We've already gotten three times applications, interviews." They know all the questions already, you know, so at this point, we don't, you know, they were, they're just doing a much less formal because most of the people they've actually already interviewed and going, and have gone through the process. So, you know, that's why I just recommend keeping a little bit of flexibility. There are, you know, as I've told you, just different situations sometimes, all from different procedures or practices. So that was why I recommended adding, at your discretion, that it could be an interview or a tell us about yourself, give us information.
So with that, the edited version that appears in board docs includes that "or." So it'd be an interview or provide us information about themselves at the board's discretion. So it didn't really substantially change what the committee had originally come up with. So if there are no other recommendations for changes or alterations, that would be the last policy that I'll share with you tonight for more improvement.
So I just want to make sure it's clear that whether it's a formal interview or just tell us about yourself, it would, it implies in-person though, not just send us some information.
It does say that, it still says, I believe, that they would come to the board and...
Candidates will appear at the next publicly advertised meeting.
I just want to make sure that that's...
And then either do an interview or at your discretion, more of a just tell us why you want to be on the board or tell us about yourself.
The last things I have are, just very quickly, just general information. The, been working with the parent council board and we talked at our parent council meeting last week at Hills Henderson about having two of the years meetings that we meet monthly and had to have two of them in the evening. And working right now to schedule one for November at the high school and working to bring in an outside speaker to have, present that night, and then we can hold our normal business in addition to that. And then the second meeting for the evening in the spring, January, February, at the new middle school. So we're going to, we're going to see how that goes and if attendance is well-received, you know, maybe continue it, expand it more, I don't know. There, it's yet to be determined, but for this year, we're going to shoot for two. The last is that October 14th is our fall parent meeting for Title I, and that'll be held at South Central. And just a refresher on Title I funds. So with those funds, you have what the local funding is providing, for example, reading support, reading specialists in all of our elementary schools. And then for title buildings, they are eligible based on their percentage of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. So our top two schools, which are Muse and South Central, have the highest percentage. So those are the schools we identify as title buildings, and we use our Title I funds to put resources on top of the local resources that are there. So for example, those schools have three reading specialists in them versus other schools. So just a quick announcement on that and that's all I have to say.
So most of the news, big news so far this year is covered by the student reps at the high school, but one thing I can add to that is that Big Mac baking also opened at the high school, and you may have seen an article about that in the end of Florida reporter. I shared it on social media, but also let's go on the website. If you didn't get a chance to read it in the paper, you can go look at our website, it's there. But yeah, most of the big news happen at the high school, so I just really wanted to share.
Just a few things. The one thing, the first thing is that we did open up a new autistic support and life skills support classroom in the elementary level at Wharton Manor this year. This is our fifth classroom in the elementary level. It is necessary due to remaining within the state requirements for caseloads. We did have quite a bit of kids coming in from early intervention last year as well as this year, so in order to remain in compliance, we did open up another classroom and so far everything is going well. An update on the children at the high school, it is up and running officially. We did have open house as student representatives did mention earlier, and we had over 50 parents and students stop in. Many actually came back a second time because they only got to stop in between periods real quickly and they wanted to come back again. Great feedback that we received. We do plan, there are a few items left that need to be done to truly finish the space, but we didn't want to wait to open it. Just some minor cosmetic things, but once we are completed, we would like to open it up for a school tour in the near future. And then the last item I have here is, we did restructure our school psychologist placements and the way that they're providing their services this year with regards to enhancing the pre-referral process. So what this looks like is we now have some school psychologists who are more dedicated to the, to the evaluation process and other school psychologists who are balancing both evaluation as well as focusing on pre-referral. So what that is, is we have a K to six process called the Well Check process, and we have a seven to 12 process called Pupil Focus. We find students who are struggling either academically, behaviorally, socially, or with their mental health, and we then have a team. The team consists of the voting principal, school psychologist, guidance counselor, sometimes a social worker, sometimes a mental health therapist. It just depends on which level it's at. And basically, that team just sits down to talk about what the student's needs are. If they're academic, what are the academic needs? Are they in a certain subject area? What type of interventions could be provided to help that student and help them show improvement in whatever the areas of need is? So there's typically a goal that is identified at that first meeting, and then we track that progress over time. And we see, are we able to help the kid, the student with the, through the interventions and help them progress to the extent where they no longer need an intervention, they're doing well, and we dismiss at that point? Or whether or not they do need special education services or they possibly will, and then we would move forward with a testing process to determine eligibility that way. So it's a great way to meet students' needs in the least restricted environment before you get to the special education aspect of it and see how they respond to the interventions because that is one of the criteria for qualifying for special education services would be showing a response to that intervention. So often, that's a piece that is overlooked, but it is very important. So we have restructured this, both in the Well Check process as well as the secondary process, and the same school site does Well Check. One school site does all of the Well Check in the district and one does the Pupil Focus seven to 12, so it provides continuity between the middle school and the high school. So the high school doesn't have to start fresh with trying to figure out students' needs, they're all carried over, as well as from our elementaries to our intermediates, and then also provides consistency among the elementary schools. So data's tracked and then we look at the end of the year, how many referrals, why the referrals were there, are there other things that we should be doing if we see patterns or trends, what's working, what may not be working, and it really helps us make some data-informed decisions for our future programming, so.
Okay, so the first action item is recommend the board approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on August 17th, the budget finance committee meeting on September 6th, the policy committee meeting on September 7th, and the building and grants committee meeting on September 13th. Is there a motion? No. Kathy, is there a second?
Second.
Julie, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. The next item is in the financial approvals, the wage tax report. To approve the report is presented, is there a motion?
Motion.
Liz Gump, Mark is the second on that. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? To approve the August 22 Treasury's report is presented.
Motion.
Liz is the first, is there a second?
Second.
Kathy, you're the second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Bills for ratification, to approve the bills for ratification approval as follows. For the month of August, the general fund, the cafeteria fund, capital project fund, and bill is in approval for September, the general fund and capital project fund.
Motion.
Thank you, Mark. A second?
Second.
Liz is the second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Before I get into my report, we have a number of scouts present and I think a couple leaders, and just want to thank you for joining us before I forget to do that. Recommend the board approve the superintendent personnel sheets and substitute list as presented.
Motion.
Motion, Kathy?
Second.
Pete, second. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Anyone, did you have discussion, Pete?
No.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Next item is to approve the extracurricular activities, clubs, booster groups, and parent groups for the 2022-23 school year, as presented.
Motion.
Motion by Mark DePujia.
Second.
Second.
By Liz Gump. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
And the next item is to have the board adopt the PA Small Games of Chance Act Resolution as presented.
Motion.
Motion by Liz Gump.
Second.
By Kathy Cooper. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
This next item, under contracts and agreements, deals with several, the first three items are related to special education, these Pathways Human Services, Cherokee, Pennsylvania, and Pittsburgh Behavioral Services. And the next two are transportation agreements, shared agreements actually, with the Washington School District for this school year and the Ringgold School District for this school year.
Motion by Mark DePujia, is there a second?
Second.
Julie made the second, any discussion?
Yeah, Mike, I just have one question on the rate. Are the rates different from school to school? Is that just negotiated between us and Ringgold and us and Washington?
You know, Mr. Mayor happens to be here, I'll let him answer to that.
Yeah, so depending, depending on the school that initiates the transportation, it could be an outside provider, so it wouldn't necessarily be one of the school districts. So the cost can be determined by the school district that sets up the transportation and then split evenly between the two, so it is negotiated.
All right, thank you.
Any additional discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is to approve the Gatsby 75 actuarial disclosure evaluation as of June 30, 2023, as presented.
Motion. Motion by Liz.
Second.
Second by Pete. Any discussion? This is the valuation that we have to get annually for our audit report, and every so many years we have a full-blown report, this is an interim year. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
And the next item is to authorize Peacock Keller LLP to file an appeal of the decision of the Washington... of the decision of the Washington County Board of Assessment Appeals granting exemption to parcel number one forty zero one five zero 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 one one dash thirty-four, retroactive to September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. This is actually a retroactive approval.
Motion. Uh, motion by Kathy. Uh, Mark, do you want to make the second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
And that next item, six point seven, has been removed, uh, will appear on the October agenda. Uh, which brings us then to the, uh, approval of tuition student. Uh, student moved into the district, student M for Vet Tech at the Parkway West Career and Technology Center under P A school code, tuition rate plus transportation costs effective September second, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion.
Motion by Liz?
Second.
Second by Kathy, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
And this next item deals with all the policy and board procedural revisions and adoptions that Mr. Chambers, uh, sort of clearly, uh, cleared out, explained for us.
Motion.
Motion by Liz?
Second.
Second by Kathy? Any discussion?
I did have something. Um, for this Title Nine, um, I think we talked about this last time as far as once we start getting into curriculum and things like that, as the Biden administration has updates, things like that, will we, um, review that again in policy? Or how does that work?
Two things I heard, you just say like curriculum and then Title Nine, definitely two separate.
Right.
There is a current, um, review of Title Nine, and if you, if you guys subscribe to P S B A News, there's just an article about that, and it's just gone through its public, um, review and opinion, and there, there will probably be revisions in the spring again. So it'll probably be backed up if they change it substantially.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
The next item, Gilz, uh, the donation of a couple of benches. One, in honor of Frida Polinsky, uh, to be placed at the Muse Elementary School valued at twelve hundred fifteen dollars. And in honor of Edward Monaco, uh, the husband of Donald, uh, Donald Monaco, a past board member, to be placed at the New Minister of Commerce valued at twenty-two hundred dollars.
Motion by Mark DePujia, is there a second? Second by Julie, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
At the last board meetings, I was authorized by the board to, uh, approve, uh, Mr. Caleb Mallory to move forward with his Eagle Scout project. And, uh, that was kind of pending his approvals, and indeed, since then, he had received his approvals. So we're asking that you approve, uh, his projects retroactive to August eighteen, two thousand twenty-two. The Eagle Scout High School Unification Project as presented.
Motion.
Motion by Liz? Second by Julie, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
This next item is the proposal from N D M that Mr. Mayor, uh, provided information about in regards to the survey services for the Wylandville Elementary School.
Motion.
Motion by Liz?
Second.
Second by Kathy? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is a change order, G six, for the new middle school. It's to approve a contract amount adjustment to delete the media lines and grooming attachment from the turf field for a D D F of sixty-nine hundred seventy-five dollars. This change order, G six, for this amount will be issued to Florida New Year, uh, construction.
Motion by Kathy? Second by Liz? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone, anyone opposed? Motion carries.
And next item, another change order for the new middle school, uh, E C three, to approve the contract amount adjustment to add two gin-ground power outlets at midfield and a scoreboard at the turf field in the amount of fifty-eight thousand seven hundred seventy-nine dollars. Change order, E C three, for this amount will be issued to A One Electric Incorporated.
Motion.
Motion by Liz? Second by Kathy, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, next item, we have a field trip request, to approve the field trip request of Mark Fauve for the high school band to participate in the two thousand twenty-three Smokey Mountain Music Festival in Gatlinburg, Tennessee, during April twenties, twentieth through twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, at no cost to the district.
Motion.
Motion by Liz? Second by Kathy? Any discussion?
Yeah, I've, I've been, uh, coached probably twenty years of high school football, so I've seen a lot of halftime shows. But if you could tell Mr. Fauve and his staff that halftime show they're doing is the best halftime show I've ever seen.
I'll be sure to tell them, and I agree, by the way.
Yes, sir.
Good, thanks for sharing.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries.
Uh, the next item is to approve additional fundraiser as presented for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Motion.
Motion by Liz? Second by Mark? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
And once again, uh, back to the moving services bid Mr. Mayor, uh, made mention of, uh, to accept the bid from Southfield Movers in the amount of thirty-four thousand one hundred thirteen dollars for moving services from the track middle school to the new middle school to be paid from the school construction company.
Motion.
Motion by Liz? Second by Kathy, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
Uh, disposal of property, just to approve the disposal, uh, of books listed in the attachment and ask for policy seven oh six point one, option number six. Some items may have no sale value or the disposal cost exceeds the network. These items may be donated to charitable organizations, nonprofit organizations, governmental agencies, other schools, or otherwise discarded.
Motion by Mark? We did, so get a second, be a second, perfect. Second by Kathy? Any discussions?
Yes, no. There are awful lot of books on this list, where in the world did they all come from? So can we clean out a library?
Well, that, yes. It is, the library is, will be, um, repurposed to have esports in, what other rooms do we have? There'd be two other rooms. Uh, learning support. There, so there'd be two.
I want to bring outside the library now, is that a learning support room? I may use it on technology.
Not important for the discussion. But there'll be two rooms.
Support and study hall.
In there, and it is the new, it is a new era.
So libraries are not the thing.
You don't pull a book off the shelf to do research or to read. You just pull up the digital versions. And there are so many books that haven't been checked out over a decade. And so the librarian has been weeding the, the collection. And when I first saw that, it was my same reaction, like, there are, that's like a thousand books. You know, what's going on? And yes, that is, that is the reality. Um, so we're gonna, the space, instead of just collecting dust with books, now we're gonna utilize it more appropriately.
And where do the books go? Like, some will be donated, some will be sold, like, or how does that kind of work?
If anybody even wants them, but as was indicated, if not, then they could end up in the dumpster.
Yeah, they first go through a process where they can use the I S B N numbers to see if there is any resale value or anything. And unfortunately, that's not the case in ninety-eight percent of the cases. Uh, uh, I, when I was at Trinity last, they were doing the same at their library.
We're going through it right now. We're going through it right now. I mean, you still have books out there that say, Pluto the planet, you know what I mean? Like you said, with your circulation list, there are, there's books, there's like fifteen hundred books that haven't been checked out since, I'm sure, any more. We're using space, which space is limited now.
Thank you for that. Um, all, any more discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Um, the next item, um, is the voting for P S B A officers for two thousand twenty-two. Um, the slate of officers that are running is President-elect Michael Gosark, Vice President Allison Mathies, and P S B A Insurance Trust Kathy Swope and Roberto Marcus. Um, those say of candidates are the recommendations. Um, so we're asking you to approve those candidates of officers for the P S B A two thousand twenty-two election. Um, is there a motion on those?
Motion.
Thank you, Mark, is there a second? Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say that they were unop- they're unopposed. I mean, they, they, they're the only ones running for the, for those positions.
Who seconded that?
Yeah, they're, they're unopposed, and now Liz doesn't have to stay an extra day since we do this.
Brenda?
Who seconded that?
Julie Chiama. And Brenda, please make a note that there was the uncontested slate, uh, in this, those names. All right, any other discussion? Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries.
The next item is, uh, the resignation from the Frank Serres Public Library. Um, Grace Laney as a member of the Frank Serres Public Library, effective immediately.
Motion by Mark?
Second.
By Liz? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
And next, we have an item to approve the appointment of Kate Spear as a member of the Frank Serres Public Library Order Directors to finish out the unexpired term of Grace Laney through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion.
Motion by Kathy?
I'll second.
Second by Julie? Any discussion?
Who's Kate Spear? Can we have some background on her? Is she a teacher?
Yeah, in your executive content, there's a resume and.
It was, okay, I'm sorry, it was that. She sounds wonderful, whoever she is. Okay.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion also carries.
And I will read for the board, uh, donations that have been received in the amount of one thousand dollars or less. Uh, the, from the Grace Baptist Church to South Central Elementary, uh, seven hundred sixty-one dollars thirty-three cents for cafeteria accounts. Uh, from Unit Media Unit One for the high school engineering and TSA club, one thousand dollars. Uh, Allegheny Health Network Engagement Council and Cannon's Road Hospital, uh, for supplies and backpacks to Wylandville Elementary in the amount of eight hundred dollars. Uh, from Med Express to Muse Elementary, hand sanitizer in the amount of about three hundred eighty-five dollars. And from Michael Capritso, our past board member, uh, library books to the middle school in the amount of thirty-six dollars and eighty cents. And to the Unit Media Unit, uh, classroom supplies for the middle school, one hundred dollars. Thomas and Maria Keller, fifty dollars, district-wide for delinquent cafeteria accounts. And from Waynesburg University to the chemistry department, uh, lab equipment at the high school, one thousand dollars. Uh, that's not actually an action item, but thank you.
But I do need a motion to adjourn. But I do need a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Julie, Mark made the motion, Julie made the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.